Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We'd like to begin today with the citizens' forum. A time set aside for any citizen who would like to bring a matter to the commission's attention that is not on the day's official agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward for that purpose? Seeing none, we will continue on with awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, "The Month of October 2007 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Salina." Phil Klimas, Salina Downtown Incorporated. Executive Director will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. After much thought and a little recruitment, we have someone who is much more important to read this proclamation to you today. We have Del Myers with us today. She is the educator with Salina County Health Department and a breast cancer survivor. Del?
Whereas the month of October 2007 will be declared as Salina Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month educates women about the importance of early detection for breast cancer. Since the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month's inception, mammography use has doubled and breast cancer death rates have declined. Still, many women do not use mammography at regular intervals. In recognition of the fact that mammography is the best available method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer, long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt, and breast cancer deaths could decline further if all women age 40 and older received mammograms at regular intervals. So now, therefore, I, Allen E. Jilka, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I urge all women and their families in Salina to get the facts about mammography and to participate in Breast Cancer Awareness Month activities in Salina's historic downtown Lee District. And in witness whereof, I have here to set up on my hand and cause the seal of the City of Salina to be affixed this 24th day of September 2007, signed by Allen Jilka, Mayor.
Could you expand on the activities that are mentioned in the resolution, you or Phil?
I'll let Phil do that. He's got all the agenda.
Thank you.
And thank you for letting me read the proclamation.
Thank you, Del.
We do have a few things going on. October 4th is the Downtown Merchants will be painting pink ribbons in the street at Santa Fe and Iron at 5:00 in conjunction with First Thursday Art Rush. October 5th, over 50 businesses in downtown Salina are participating in Lee National Denim Day. And this is our nation's largest single-day fundraiser for breast cancer research. We have, on October 6th through the 20th, Downtown Merchants may have specials on pink merchandise. And we're also selling Tree of Life recognition cards for survivors or those people who were victims of breast cancer. And that Tree of Life is at Tammy Walker Cancer Center. And all of the funds that we raise from the 6th on stay here locally for breast cancer screenings and treatment. And that fund will be administered by Salina Regional Health Foundation. On the 15th, Tammy Walker Cancer Center at Salina Regional Health Center will host their annual Breast Cancer Forum. Their featured speaker this year is Dr. Jennifer Klimp. And she is a women's health psychologist, and her presentation is on the continuum of women's health care. This forum is funded by generous donation of the Avon Foundation Breast Care Fund. On October 19th, the Salina Human Relations Department would like to invite you all to, and the listening public, to primarily women in the community, to Ladies Night Out, a workshop at the Friendship Center. It will be held Friday evening, October 19th, from 5 until 9 o'clock. The department is working under a grant from the Susan B. Coleman Foundation for the Cure. We cannot emphasize enough the importance of early detection. Carla Schmidt of the Early Detection Works Program will present information on how low and moderate income women may qualify for free screening. Interpreters will be on hand for Spanish interpretation. Tammy Walker Cancer Center will also be present at this forum with information, as well as the Salina and Salina County Health Department. The Human Relations Department is sponsoring a free meal at 6:30 that evening. On October 20th, at the Tammy Walker Cancer Center and Lee District members will host Denim Diamonds &amp; You, a fundraising event to establish a local breast cancer screening and treatment fund. The lobby of Tammy Walker Cancer Center will be the hotspot, as lucky ticket holders can vie for a chance to win a half a carat diamond, which has been donated by Vernon Jewelers. You can also have an opportunity to participate in a sealed bid auction from prizes donated by local businesses who will help decorate the Tree of Life again. We'll have Taste Streets and live entertainment. Tickets are $50 apiece and are available at Lee District offices. Again, the local fund that we're establishing will be administered by the Salina Regional Health Foundation. And we do have pink ribbons for each one of you. And we've already delivered the pink M&amp;M's, so they should be up there unless Lucy hid them.
Phil, I have a signed copy of your proclamation for you.
Thank you very much.
We also have posters for both events that are going on.
Item 4.2, "The Month of October 2007 as the Month of the Young Adolescent in the City of Salina." Shelby Dinkel and Gabe Gutierrez, students of Lakewood Middle School, will read the proclamation.
Hi, I'm Gabe Gutierrez from Lakewood, 8th grade. Whereas the period of early adolescence, age 10 to 15, is a distinct developmental period between childhood and full adolescence. And whereas, this period has been little understood nor its importance recognized. And whereas, youth between the ages approximately 10 to 15 undergo more extensive physical, mental, social, moral, and emotional changes, with the possibility exception of infancy than any other time of life. And whereas, the attitudes and values young adolescents develop during these formative years largely determine their later behavior. And whereas, parents continue as primary models and guides even as young adolescents give increased attention to their peer group. And whereas, the community itself is also a classroom in which young adolescents learn many lessons. And whereas, much valuable information and research about this important age group now exists and should be circulated. Therefore, be it resolved that October be declared the month of the young adolescent in Salina, Kansas. And be it further resolved that all those at Lakewood Middle School with the City of Salina join the celebration by extending their knowledge about the critical years and undertaking actions that will support a healthy development of young adolescents. And we have some things to pass out here.
Thank you.
I was going to ask you if you could identify your three helpers there.
Oh.
Let them identify themselves.
I'm Quinn Kathreinberg.
I'm Dekeisha Cooper.
I'm Damian Cooper.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And those are just some of the activities that we're going to be doing, doing the month of October.
Super. I have a copy of your proclamation for you.
Item 4.3, "The Week of October 7 through the 13th, 2007 as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Salina." Roger Williams, Fire Marshal, will read the proclamation.
Having lived through two young adolescents, I know that's very important. I'm Larry Mullik, and the Fire Chief for the City of Salina. I want to take a moment and introduce our Fire Marshal Roger Williams. Roger and his staff in our Fire Prevention Division does a wonderful job of public education. This is a time when we try to highlight and spotlight everybody's attention on fire prevention. Each year, more than 5,000 people in our country perish from fire. Smoke detectors, as you know, have made a big dent in that, but they don't work unless you have a battery in them. And that's one of the problems that we've found, that although most of the homes do have smoke detectors, in many cases, the batteries have been removed. This year, Roger will read the proclamation this year that touches on the logo for this year. And each year, they pick out, the National Fire Protection Association picks out a different logo. This year is "Practice Your Home Escape Plan." As he gets up here and reads this, and you might think about if you have very young children at home, or the elderly at home, your parents, or things of that nature, that we talk about escape plans a lot, being able to get out of a structure. But unless you allow them to try that, to see if your child can raise the window to get out, you don't know that. And I think many times, people are surprised when they find out that windows jam and things of that nature. And kids may not be as familiar with going out the window, as you would like to say and see them do. So with that, and with this logo in mind of "Practice Your Escape Plan," I'll invite Fire Marshal Williams up here to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Whereas the City of Salina is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas the nonprofit National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, has documented through its research that home fires kill 3,030 people in the U.S. in 2005 alone, roughly eight people every day. And whereas, the Salina firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of the home fires and home fire injuries through prevention, protection, and education. And whereas, Salina's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, the 2007 Fire Prevention Week theme, it's "Fire Prevention Week: Practice Your Fire Escape Plan," effectively serves to remind us of the simple action we take to stay safer from fire year-round. Therefore, I, Allen Jilka, Mayor of Salina, do hereby proclaim October 7th through the 13th, 2007, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city. And I urge the citizens of Salina to heed the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2007, and to support the public safety activities and efforts of our Salina Fire and Emergency Services. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Salina to be affixed to this first day of October 2007. Allen Jilka, Mayor.
And will you be making some presentations in the schools or having some other activities?
Actually, we have quite a few activities. One of the things I brought, we actually designed a new banner for the Salina Fire Department, a little more state-of-the-art, a little more eye-appealing. We pretty much used all the members of our local fire department, did a kind of mirage of photos. This is actually Scott Pilgrim, several other firefighters, Judy Piercy, our secretary, is actually our patient. He's kind enough to act as our patient for the day, so don't get that very often. Some of the other things we're going to do is on October 6th, kind of a pre-kickoff to Fire Prevention Week, we're actually going to have our open house for the newly remodeled Fire Station Number Two. Brought a flyer, we call that the hub, because it's basically centrally located. We'll be there from 10 to 2 with the open house. We're going to have a couple puppet shows for the kids, tours, some literature, some history on Fire Station, how it progressed to where it is today. We'll also have refreshments and tours. We'll also be going to the Salina Public Library, in which we'll be reading "Stop, Drop, and Roll" by Margie Collier to the children, and at which time, we'll also pass out some other safety information, but we'll also give them a document that they can practice writing their home escape plan on. Some of the other things we'll be doing, we'll be out at K-State Salina on the 11th to participate. This is the first time we've been asked to participate in K-State Salina's Fire Prevention Day activity. So we'll be out there, we'll have apparatus out there, and we'll also discuss, since we're not going to have young children there, we'll actually be talking about dormitory safety on their level. We'll have some information there. Again, we'll have our brochures, our recruitment brochures with us out there, and our banner to kind of publicize the Salina Fire Department and the importance of how important it is for the home escape plan or dormitory escape plan and their particular application. Then obviously, every year, we have multiple requests for station tours and attendance to elementary schools and so on, where we'll go out and do our "Meet the Firefighter," where the firefighter will actually talk a little bit about what it is that he does for his day-to-day activities, and actually get dressed in his full bunker gear with a Scott Pack, so they can actually see them in a good manner. So, but that's just some of the things we'll be doing. We'll also have, my understanding is, South High School will have a career expiration day twice that week, so we'll have about 50 South High School kids coming through Fire Station Number One at some point next week as well.
We certainly hope our citizens will heed the message, and on behalf of all the citizens, we thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
We will continue on with public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, "Public Hearing on Petition Number 4299, Requesting the Vacation of an Easement Along Lot 11, Lot 12, Block 1 in the Cedar Ridge Edition."
I'll open the public hearing and call Mr. Place.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This petition was filed on August 31st by Bob Hayworth for vacation of the north 15 feet of the existing 35-foot easement. A portion of the Cloud Street right-of-way was vacated with the plaid of Cedar Ridge Edition. A portion of that old right-of-way was retained as drainage and utility easement. The utility franchises have not had adequate time to investigate the impact of this petition, and therefore, it is recommended that the City Commission delay action on this petition for two weeks to allow full investigation by the various utilities. Answer any questions if you would have them.
Any questions? Seems appropriate if we don't have input from them. We'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that petition number 4299, any action on that be postponed until the October 15th meeting.
Motion is to postpone action on petition number 4299, a request for vacation of easement until October 15th of this year. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That passes 5 to 0. So we will continue on with the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, "Approve the Minutes of September 24th, 2007."
Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion is to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That passes 5 to 0. So we will continue on with development business.
Item 7.1, "Rescind Approval of Ordinance Number 0610359, Rezoning Property Located in South Ninth Street."
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioners, this is really an administrative matter to clean up and bring a close to a ordinance that was approved on first reading and was awaiting actual transfer of the property and plating to occur. That is not going to occur. Mr. John Baker with Brand Growth Inc. came as close as anyone has to actually securing the property owned by Mr. Dooley out there on South Ninth Street. There was a signed contract, but no closing ever occurred, and I've been informed that that transaction is no longer going to take place. And Mr. Dooley, in his agreement to actually sign the application, wanted it clearly indicated that if it didn't go through, that he wanted to retain his A1 agricultural zoning. So the action that would be for you today would be simply to rescind your first reading approval of ordinance 0610359 that proved this zoning subject to plating. Since that condition has not been fulfilled, the appropriate action would be to rescind approval of that ordinance and allow the city clerk to close that out.
Question, Mr. Andrew. Seeing none, I'd entertain any public comment. There being none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I would move that we rescind the first reading approval of ordinance 0610359, rezoning certain property on South Ninth Street.
Second. Motion is to rescind approval of ordinance 06-10359, which rezoned some tractor property on South Ninth Street. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That passes 5 to 0.
Item 7.2, "First Reading Ordinance Number 0710402, Amending Chapter 33, Article 3 of the Salina Code pertaining to Junk and Junk Dealers."
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, we've been in the process of discussing the process for approval of an operation of salvage yards and junkyards within the city limits. And as a first step, there was a set of zoning ordinance definitions that were adopted to try to make the city's local definitions consistent with the state and KDOT definitions, as well as our own licensing requirements. The second step was to amend the zoning ordinance in our industrial districts to establish that future salvage yards and salvage yard expansions would only be allowed as a conditional use, meaning the location and their plan of operations would be reviewed and approved on a case-by-case, location-by-location basis. This third part deals with Chapter 33, which is our local licensing requirement for automobile junkyards, salvage yards, scrap metal processors. And if approved, it would apply to the four existing licensed operations that we have, which would be Salina Iron and Metal on North Fifth Street, BFR Metals, which is operating on West State Street, Ronnick Salvage Company, which is on South Cherry, just south of West State Street. And then there's Fuller's Used Parts and Recycling on East Pacific. If these amendments were adopted, then these operations would have to come into compliance with these requirements when they go to renew their licenses on January 1st of each year. And what the rewrite attempts to do is make the definitions and classifications consistent with the zoning ordinance, to have an improved application, an application process that requires the operators to provide a little additional information than they are now, would result in multi-department inspections of salvage yards. Currently, there's only one city staff person that reviews those and comments to the city clerk on a renewal of the license. It provides for written information to be provided to the applicant as to the status of their license, and then sets out a number of general operating requirements. Basically, if gates or fences are in disrepair, those would need to be brought into repair. We have situations now where we have salvage yards where there's no surface of any kind inside the yard, so if emergency vehicles went in there, there's no type of surfacing or all-weather surface. We also have situations where material is stacked, or vehicles are stacked so close together, there is no aisle or place for emergency vehicles to get into the site. There's also one item that probably wouldn't be particularly well-received, would limit the stacking of materials and the stacking of crushed cars to the height of the required screening fence. So if there were operations that had those in place as of January 1st, they would have to keep their stacked materials or cars at or below the level of the screening fence. So this is a pretty comprehensive change, and it raises the bar quite a bit for the existing operations in order to renew their licenses. But it was compiled partially from comments received over the years from public safety officials and others about what mechanisms there were available to get some of the operations modified so they were more accessible. But I'd be happy to address any questions about that in general or specific portions of that.
Questions, Mr. Andrew.
Do any of the four existing facilities meet all these standards, particularly the physical standards of the fences and driveways?
I don't believe any of the four would meet all of them. There's at least two I'm aware of that have no kind of internal surfacing at all that would constitute a driveway or access aisle that the fire department would normally have for a fire lane or emergency access. I think some of the fences are either missing in some spots or knocked down, and I think the other one would be the materials being stacked over the height of the fence. I have a number where we have sites where the material is stacked higher than the screening fence.
So are all four of the present operators aware of this proposed ordinance?
They have been sent drafts over time, and also this particular blue sheet, and the draft was sent to all four of them.
Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fencing standards may also represent a change for the existing operators?
Mm-hmm. That's what we said. The fencing, as far as the material that would be visible from a public street, in other words, if I had a unpainted or galvanized metal sheeting that was facing a public street or highway, that would have to be modified to a different material on the portion that actually faced a street.
So on number nine, where it says "or sheet metal panels," you mean unfinished or unpainted?
Unfinished.
Painted sheet metal's okay.
Yes, you could have painted metal.
Okay.
And then, I'm trying to see, is it just cars that can't be stacked higher than the fence?
It would be other materials, so if I had scrap metal or machine parts or whatever that were higher than the screening fence.
Okay.
Then those would have to be brought below that elevation.
Let's say they were, let's say you had a six-acre tract of land, so if the scrap metal pile, for instance, was 200 feet from the fence, it still needs to be below the height of the fence?
Either that, or then that requirement could certainly be deleted from the proposed ordinance.
I think that would effectively, I can speak for Slant Iron Metal, for instance. I can't even imagine, I take plenty of scrap metal there, I can't even imagine that they could operate on the amount of land they have and disperse their scrap iron evenly to manage to be underneath that height requirement.
Then I think the options would either be to eliminate that or to have it within a certain distance of a public street or property line.
Dean, did they bring that to your attention as a concern? Representatives?
Well, we recognize that it was a concern because of the existing situation they have. Most of the material they have along Elm Street and other places is stacked higher than the screening today, and the same for stacked cars.
Right. I just wondered if they had contacted you after receiving the information, if they'd contacted you and voiced a concern?
They had.
Okay.
I understand the intent there. I certainly wouldn't want a dealer to have a six-foot fence or something like that and 18 feet of car right next to it, but it seems, that seems like a pretty big imposition on some of these businesses.
And there may be a distance within a street or property line that you think that's important, and if it's in the middle of a site or barely visible, then that's probably less important. then that's probably less important.
I have another question on procedure in the application. It seems like there's some kind of a logic gap in that section 3338 on the application says it comes into the city clerk and notifies the chief of police, the building official, the zoning administrator, health sanitation inspector, and the fire chief. And then it lists reviews for four of those five, no review for the police department. And then you skip over to 3341 in the case that someone wants to transfer ownership of one of these. Then all of a sudden, the chief of police is the only one that, he suddenly becomes the expert and makes all the review. And that just seems like a big gap in logic to me. I didn't understand what was going on there. And doesn't say anything about going back through the city. Well, it does say go back through the city clerk, but that the all approval and authorization comes from the chief of police who didn't review the first application.
I think we would want certainly to have, the idea behind this would be that you would have a team or group of individuals that would go out and do that site visit and compile a checklist. And the, certainly want the police department represented in that. Not every type of license that you have through the city of Sline is transferable. And certainly, one option is to make licenses not transferable.
Dean, what specific role would the chief of police have in that? Because it says, license issued under this transfer section should not be transferred, signed, or used by any other person unless the application is made to city clerk and approved by the chief of police. And what the chief of police is looking at is the transferee being qualified to engage in the business of. And then it lists those. What will they look at to determine if the individual's qualified? Because this is focused on the individual, not the operation.
See if there's any, basically be a criminal background check to see if they're involved in any crimes that were involved with motor vehicle transfers or titles.
Is that related to the statutory, to qualification under the statutory provisions?
I don't believe so. I think that's an extra provision.
Okay, and so that's not something we address today, then?
It's not something that's addressed specifically today, no.
Okay.
It's silent today on whether you can actually transfer a license. We have had them transfer.
In a case where the actual scrap yard isn't visible from the street, where there's an entrance and a sort of drive back into that yard, or you'd have to turn or something is, non-transparent gates are still going to be required basically on anything?
That's the idea, at least at the front entry.
Okay.
And the Ronek salvage yard is very difficult to find. But the Cherry Street actually is a public street, so it does have a public street entrance. But if you're driving on State Street, you have a very hard time realizing that that's tucked back there.
Maybe I missed, is there a timeframe listed in here? January 1. And I mean for how long they're issued for?
They are issued annually from whenever you apply through December 31st. On section 3341, it says the license is good from the date of issuance to expiration, which is December 31 of the calendar year. That's the way it is today.
Okay, so we have, seems like we have two questions here. We've got the whole issue of fencing.
There's no doubt that the stacking, the limitation on stacking is an issue that's going to have an effect on how these places operate.
The other concern I would have would be on section 13 with the driving aisles being required to have crushed stone or gravel. And I only say that because in terms of the amount of traffic, the heavy equipment that constantly is rolling over, a lot of those lots are actually, the configuration is redone on a weekly basis with the amount of scrap that comes in and the inflow, the permanency and the maintenance of keeping gravel would seem to be an issue.
Okay, so we have three areas of concern. The fencing issue, the transfer, and the role of the police chief, and the gravel requirement. Let's take those one at a time. The fencing issue, suggestions on how to deal with that?
The height of the fencing is not so critical as the height of the stuff behind it. One way to deal with a big pile of stuff is to have a 16 or 20-foot fence. But a 20, 24-foot fence is hard to build and maintain with the winds we have around here and expensive.
I think something that would allow for a maximum or minimum distance from the fence, I think would allow for that and be a pretty easy fix.
Suggestion, Dean?
Within so many feet of a public street or adjoining property line.
And what would be a, so you're saying there wouldn't be a, a proposal would be not to have a limit if it was within?
The idea would be if you were more than, if you said 100 feet or 200 feet from a public street or property line, then the stacking limitation would not apply. Over the years, staff has received a number of questions over time that says, "How come you require screening and then you allow the individuals to stack the material they're supposed to be screening higher than the screening fence?" So the clean answer is to say, "Well, you just can't stack it higher." That's not very practical, the way some of these places operate. So I, to me, it would seem like 200 feet or 100 feet would be a reasonable distance to keep it away from your neighbors or the public street. But that's really a judgment call.
Yeah, Commissioners, another factor is the elevation of the street to the property as well. I mean, if your street's higher and you're looking down in, you're going to see a little more than if it's the other way around. Ultimately, the question here is, is what do you want to have seen? Because even if you're 100 or 200 feet away and it's stacked high enough, you're going to see the material in there. And the question is, is what do you want to see in that? And really, to me, that should be sort of the basis of where you're, what your thought is on that. And if you're okay with seeing it at a distance, that's, we can modify this. If you don't want to, you'd want to leave it. Just really depends on what your thoughts are on that.
The problem is the standard doesn't apply. I would prefer not to see any stacked cars from the street. There's a salvage yard on State Street, for instance, that I could drive by and from 300 feet away could easily see stacked cars. I don't want to apply that standard to a company like Sline Iron Metal, who essentially has everything hidden, but would have this standard on a much substantially smaller piece of ground, where I don't understand how they could even spread their metal around to meet that standard. I think it would be unfair for that type of operation.
In other operating requirements, do we have requirements that no water shall be allowed to stand in any one place to allow the breeding of mosquitoes?
I need to have Dean address that. I believe that probably is in our nuisance ordinance.
That's right out of the nuisance ordinance, whether it was somebody's vacant lot or...
How do we enforce that?
Usually on a complaint basis. And it usually has to be there for a considerable period of time before it rises to that level. But that is generally enforced on a complaint basis if a vacant lot or other property has a place that has standing water.
And how do we enforce their drives and internal drives being free from potholes when our streets have potholes in them?
That's a reasonable question. We have, these are all standards that are in the zoning ordinance for other uses.
I think the intent of this is excellent. And I agree with the intent. I'm struggling with the draconian ways that it, it's coming at us. And to try to make this effective, January 1 of '08, I can see that, I think some of the junkyards do need to disappear in certain areas of the city and the community. And this amendment to this chapter will sure do that. And if that's our intent, that's fine. If we're trying to make a usable, workable ordinance, I'm struggling with this one.
I'm not sure it's that far away. We've had three specific issues that have been brought up. The issue of potholes in the community, we have a few, but I think maybe that's overstated a bit. Seems to me if we could come up with some resolution of the three main matters that have been brought up, is that something that staff could tweak? Or is it necessary to go back to the planning commission?
We can certainly eliminate the transfer section altogether. I've, my experience is that already has been that licenses are issued to one individual and we have different entities operating in the junkyard that aren't the license holder. And it seemed like it was reasonable to address that in some way. But that can be done in a different manner. I agree with all the, as to the practicality of some of these things are going to be a challenge on the enforcement side. And I would agree with Commissioner Veer that this takes a low bar and sets a high bar and doesn't, it's not a medium approach. So it's, that's the way it was drafted. So I think that the intent is to set the bar fairly high. And it's a fairly drastic change from where we are today. But we'd be happy to go back at any of those things and try to find a more middle-ground approach to some of those items.
So if we eliminated the transfer requirement, just everybody would have to apply to one, apply for one?
Yeah. Commissioners, I don't think it's bad to have a transfer requirement. But in looking at this, when we look at our other ordinances in which we have, let's say the police department, look at the background, take the taxi licenses or liquor licenses, you kind of have a set of prescribed criteria in there. We don't really have that here. It's pretty open-ended. I think if we want to keep it in here, where we're going to do a criminal review, we probably need to take a closer look at what that really means. Because it could be all over the place as far as the type of crime over a period of time that would disqualify you. So we may come back, we need to look at that and talk about that over the next couple of weeks, I think. We may come back and say, "Let's eliminate that part of the transfer section." But I think it'd be good to have a transfer section. It seems reasonable and would be beneficial to owners to be able to transfer to another owner. I don't see where that would be an issue.
I mean, I have some sympathy for the sentiments expressed by Commissioner Veer. My point was, is this something we can just send it back to staff and have you tweak it without having to go back to the planning commission and rehash the whole thing?
This did not originate with the planning commission since this is outside the zoning ordinance and it's just the licensing provision. So any revisions that would be made would be done by staff at your direction.
Yeah, I think there's some specific areas of concern. Is there anything else you would need from us this time?
Well, it would be helpful for us on the items that have been discussed to make sure we have consensus on where you want to go with those. And then that way, we can redraft it back in a form that we think's pretty comfortable for you.
Okay, now, correct me if I'm wrong up here. Are we, there's some concern about the fencing issue. I don't know, there possibly a setback of X number of feet before the height prohibitions kick in?
Be my recommendation.
Commissioner, I want to make sure I understand. Were you talking about you would enforce the height within so many feet of the fence? And then beyond that, it wouldn't be?
To me, that would be a simple solution. Not necessarily, I'm not sure that it would necessarily give us the outcome that it was intended to, but...
Is there a thought as to what a height restriction would be? For example, I don't know what your fence size would be, eight feet, something like that. Would a height restriction be 15 feet, 18 feet, 20 feet? Or would we want to leave it unlimited? What's your thought on that?
I guess I've seen some scrap piles that I would estimate to be 25, 25 feet at times. I don't know. I'm, I can't believe that there's no scrap yard owners here because this could have substantially...
There is one.
Okay, one. Affected their business. So I'm, I don't know. Some input would have been helpful, I suppose.
Okay.
Now, your question about what if the yard is below the road? I don't know how to handle that.
Yeah, that's really hard. I guess my thought is, is right now, the fence in essence establishes a height limit for the stacking. If the fence is no longer used as a reference to the height limit, would we want to establish a height limit or not? And if we did, what do we want it, 15, 25?
Dean had made the suggestion 100 or 200 feet. That's distance.
Right, that's if we, that's another way of looking at it. Is if you're so much of a distance from the fence, then you just eliminate it altogether, I think was the thought. Or you could put a height requirement still. You know, quite honestly, once it sticks up above there, I don't know if it makes much difference anymore at that point. You're still, you're going to see it. And if the, if the purpose is not to see it, it's not going to make a whole lot of difference from a visual perspective, an aesthetic perspective, whether it's 12 feet or 20 feet, probably. And I don't know that we've looked at this necessarily from a safety perspective. That's really more, we're looking at the owner to deal with the safety aspect.
20 feet sound reasonable.
I don't think that, well, if we were in a hillier community, it would, it's almost a moot point. I'm thinking my favorite junkyard in the whole state is at Colby. And you can see all the inventory in that from Old Forty when you drive by because it's in Rolling Hills. And all of it's below the level of the highway. We don't have quite that problem, except there on State Street's the only place where the street is higher than the surrounding ground of any of the four existing ones. I would think if we had a limitation that you can't stack higher than the fence within, say, just 25 feet of the fence, then that takes care of the public issue of something coming off the stack and ending up on the outside of the fence, which is a safety concern and a public concern. And the view is just a problem...
a problem that we'll just have to live with. Because there's no way that you can enforce all the view. What if somebody comes over in their helicopter and doesn't like the And not have a limit on stacking. That's between them and their insurance company and their employees, and the limits of their equipment.
So if we got 25 feet, is that far enough to alleviate?
It's just 25 feet behind the fence.
Right.
And unlimited height.
Yeah, I don't know if it's going to make a whole lot of difference. I mean, I look at this as it's pretty clear that you would see it or you don't see it. I suppose 25 would help, but it's just really a question as to whether you want it seen or not. And once you get to that, it's, you can, it's pretty easy.
I guess I kind of agree with Commissioner Purney. Oh, sure. Want to invite any public input, if there is any?
I just have a couple of questions. I'm from BFR Metals, trying to get everything going out there. I've spent, I don't know how many thousand on fence to be six foot tall because that's what I was told to put up. Now, we're eight foot. I've got a man coming to plant 20-foot trees when I was supposed to plant six foot, and now I don't know what to do. I mean, I'll still do the 20-foot trees for screening, but if I can't stack the cars, I don't need the screening. You understand what I'm saying?
Okay.
I mean, I've had to wait from the first of June, and actually today's the first day they're going to start planting trees. And I'm not sure I was at the top list, but I'm close. And other than that, they won't plant trees through the summer months. That's the reason I don't have trees up now. And I'll bear the cost and put the trees up. But I'm in the situation on State Street, I think the 20-foot trees will make it where you can't see, but I'm not sure of that. But the six-foot fence, I mean, I've really wasted money. Eight-foot fence is a waste of money too for, no more screening is going to do because of the height of the road. And then I have another question too about the, on there where it said about the flooding. This summer when we had the floods, the floodwater comes in from clear out by the old dog pound where the gun range is. It comes clear back around there by that nightclub, the nudie bar, whatever they call it, comes under the railroad tracks, under the railroad tracks again, and comes on that property, and there's nowhere for it to go. And I had the health department out there, and they won't let me pump it out because they said I don't have anywhere to go with it. So what can I do now so I don't have the standing water in the problem? Can I dam up where it can't get on my property? I mean, is that, is that something I can do and then make everybody else live with it with my water too? I mean, that's just, it's just a question. And I rented that place out there probably 30 years ago as an auto repairer, and I don't think I ever had, I don't think there's ever water out there. And I've got it pretty much built up now where I don't have any water except clear at the back. Well, if I can't build that up, I'm going to have water, and there's nothing I can do because there's nowhere for it to go. The nearest place to the east is Dry Creek, and that's approximately a block and a half, maybe two blocks. And surely that, going the other way is the dyke, and it won't go, it won't go through the dyke. It just stays back there because it runs under the railroad bridge, and I mean, it's just stuck there.
Do you have standing water right now?
I didn't yesterday. But it's just now getting dry enough to plant trees in the back. And that's one of the places I'm supposed to plant trees. But it's been there basically all summer. And I called the health department, had them come look, and they say that they don't think I can dam it up. Well, I mean, if I can't do that, there's nothing I can do with the water. I mean, I'm just kind of in a catch-22, or, and it comes there and off somebody else's land, and I get stuck with it.
Okay.
Okay. Other than that, I don't have any questions or any comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like this gentleman to have some legitimate concerns.
I think there are a lot of legitimate concerns. I don't honestly see how this is enforceable. I mean, to have it in requirements that you maintain a junkyard in a sanitary condition, junkyard and sanitary condition don't appear to go together. I would really prefer that this be sent back to staff and we do some work on this because I, as I said before, I agree there are some junkyards that need to disappear. And this will certainly do it, especially on a yearly basis, because it appears to me that many of the requirements are very subjective. And if that's our intent, then we've got what we asked for, but I don't believe it is. And would really like to see this go back and some work, and would strongly encourage the salvage people, the junkyard operators, to give staff input on how we can, we can work through this. Unfortunately, we need junkyards, and we need scrap metal processing and salvage yards. We may not want them where they're at, but I don't think this is the proper way to go about this.
Other issues that staff want a direction on?
Well, I'm not sure.
I think we all agree we want to send it back to you.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Veneer's concerns are much broader probably rather than two or three items. And so I think it comes back, probably the first place we need to start is the question of when, when we talk about Salina being attractive and well-maintained and so forth, we need to probably understand what, with relationship to these types of junkyard salvage facilities, what does that mean to you as a commission? And then if we, once we, our perspective was, is I think when we looked at that, we said, yes, we do need the junkyards and salvage yards. And there's a question of do we need them in the city, and to what degree do we need them in the city, where they're obviously seen by high volumes of people? And what does that mean for the appearance of our community? But we need to get probably a better gauge from you as to what you think that means. And from that, then we might be able to recraft this or redraft it in another way. This is obviously a regulatory perspective that says it's okay to have them. It's okay to have the ones we have today, but there are pretty strict requirements on keeping them as nice as you possibly could, being a junkyard. There are other, we could probably possibly look at, in essence, not providing for any additional expansion, not regulating them at all, or to no more degree than we do today, but no expansions, no new junkyards, and just saying we're going to live with what we have. And we've looked at it for a long time. We'll continue to look at it, and that's okay. There's not a lot of variations in there, I don't believe. But again, it all really depends on what you want to see. How you, because we can, we can go with whatever approach you'd like us to.
I think we ought to discuss this on our October 16 work session. Because right now, aren't junkyards, salvage yards allowed in virtually any of the higher industrial zones without any special use permit or anything from I-2 and up?
Well, we have, we have addressed the question of somebody comes to the city and wants to establish a new one or expand the boundaries of an existing one. This deals strictly with the licensing and relicensing of those that are in existence.
Yeah. And the real issue is how many, or another real issue is how many other locations are there that are potential junkyards? And what requirements do we want for those?
Yeah, that's a whole nother part of this. That's absolutely true, though.
But we, we start on this road because we felt there should be some kind of minimum standards.
Yeah, I think so. And I mean, today, there are some minimum standards, but it just goes back to the question of is this an aspect of the community that you believe fits under the goal of aesthetically pleasing and so forth? And to what degree do you want us to deal with that goal with relationship, relationship to junkyards and salvage yards?
My answer to that would be yes, but I can certainly see, you know, if there's some disagreement over the specifics, we need to, in some manner, hash that out, take things out of the proposed ordinance. So if we send it back to staff, any other specific directions we want to give?
Okay. I need to ask because we talked about the specific items, and then we also had concerns more about the broader concept of how this addresses them. What I think we need is to know if you have consensus on, first of all, is this general approach acceptable? If the answer is no, then we really need to talk about what, what other approach should we use? If the answer is yes, then the question's back to the detail of some of these items. Are there certain items that you feel need to be modified, such as the issue of the stacking, you know, that type of thing, so that we know specifically what part of it you'd like us to modify?
Well, that's tough. Obviously, to me, this sort of approach would be better and more tolerable if it were tied with the zoning on the front end on any new salvage yards. But this all seems to be written for the four existing salvage yards, a couple of which have a real long history in Salina, and a couple which I've been customer, including just last week. And it is a valuable service, more so than ever, on the whole concept of reusing, especially the metal materials. It's good for the whole economy. So I think, you know, two different things there. We need to review where they're going to be allowed in zoning, in undeveloped land at the present time, or in land suitable for redevelopment. And then we need to look at how strict, how much upgrade we want of the present facilities. And we pretty well talked all those over here today.
Seems to me that the general approach is, is an okay thing, but definitely under the operating requirements, just a real comprehensive cleanup of some of that. I know this already came back cleaned up, so hate to have seen it before. Anyway, if we could...
Endorsement of the general concept?
Let me ask this question. Would you be more comfortable if we, at this point, withdrew this item and came back to you and had discussions about the general concept?
Mm-hmm.
Would that be easier?
Again, more of the study session approach.
Yeah.
Probably.
Sounds like the thing to do, then.
Okay.
And I would encourage you to get with the other three or the other four because basically this puts everyone on notice that things are going to change, and they're going to change drastically. And if this is your livelihood, I would hope that you would give some direction or participate in the process of making those changes.
Yeah. Appreciate you taking the time to come.
Definitely. Okay, can we just leave that lie then? Or do we need a resolution that says that? A motion?
You could just direct us to schedule a topic to be reviewed during an upcoming study session. Take an action to do that would be fine.
Action to do that?
Yeah, I think just a simple motion would address the status of the matter best.
Want to make such a motion?
I'll do that. Mayor, I move that we refer this item back to the staff for additional research and study, bring it back possibly to a study session for further review.
Second. Motion is to refer the matter back to staff and ask for further information to be provided at a future study session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0. We will continue with items of administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 07-10,416, providing a change in zoning district classification from C1 to PC2 on property addressed to 723 South Ohio Street.
This passed on September 24 on first reading. I wouldn't entertain any additional comments if there are any. Seeing none, I entertain a motion on second reading.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of ordinance 07-10416 on second reading.
Second. Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10416, providing for a change in zoning classification from C1 to PC2 on property at 723 South Ohio Street. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Purney?
Aye.
Commissioner Veneer?
Aye.
Mayor Gioka?
Aye.
That passes 5-0.
Item 8.2, award a bid for landfill groundwater monitoring well installation.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners. As a result of extensive groundwater geoprobe investigation dating back to the summer of 2006, city landfill is now required by KDHE to install a series of groundwater monitoring wells. An additional five two-well clusters plus one individual well will be installed at the Salina landfill to monitor potential down gradient plume migration contamination levels and movement. A well cluster consists of a deep well of about 50 feet and a shallow well, those one about 30 feet. Water bearing zones containing volatile organic compounds, or VOCs, detected during the 2006 and 2007 direct push groundwater investigation, and that's the geoprobe, and potential migration paths were considered when determining placement of the additional groundwater wells. These wells have also been placed to address KDHE comments in an August 10 letter. The VOC contaminants of concern at the site include PCE, TCE, CICE1, 2DCE, VC1, 1DCA, CT, and CFM. Contamination at the site has migrated to the southern property boundary of the landfill, and in one location just beyond, possibly due to recharge of the aquifer zones during construction of new landfill cells up gradient from the existing closed landfill area. Our landfill consultant, CDM, sent out and received bids on well installation on our behalf with the following results. Pratt Well Service from Pratt, Kansas, bid $16,350.50. GeoCore from Salina, Kansas, bid $16,708. And GS from Wichita, Kansas, bid $19,725. CDM has calculated the bid results, and Pratt Well Service is the least expensive. The next bid from, is from GeoCore, that is $358 higher. However, they are local Kansas, are local Salina business and are much closer to the drilling site. Therefore, our recommendation is to award the bid to GeoCore. CDM is recommending a 10 to 15 percent contingency to cover any unexpected expenses based on the uncertainty of the drilling process and estimated well development times that seem a little bit light on all three bids. And the reason, then again, for the contingency with this is that there's a lot of uncertainty in the drilling process and that they're charged actually for the work that they do. So that's why the contingency. Sometimes if you hit a rock or you have to drill a new hole, there's extra added expense to that process. Sufficient funds are budgeted in the 2007 solid waste budget to cover this expense. And staff recommends the award of the landfill groundwater monitoring well installation bid to GeoCore for up to $19,214.20. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
These pollution plumes mostly affect future cells eight through 12. Does that mean that we're going to have to do some kind of remediation to them in the immediate future? Or will it sort of automatically be taken care of when you excavate to make those an operating cell?
These contaminants that you see, those are affecting the groundwater, and the location would be below the bottom... would be below the bottom of the cell, the new cell construction that we...
So the new excavation won't be that deep. So is there some way that at some future date we could get into some kind of remediation system that goes into the groundwater level?
It is, it is, it is possible that we could get into a remediating situation to be able to do something like that. But the contaminants that are in the groundwater here would be below what we would construct the cell to be. So it's, we're down to with a deep well of, what, 50 feet and then a shallow well of about 30. So, you know, we would, we would still have contamination even if we excavated the dirt out of those new cells.
Additional questions of staff?
Did I miss the timeline on this?
Mr. Frazier?
The drilling is scheduled at this time for, I believe, I want to say October 22nd, but on or about that date with the approval tonight. And that this would coincide with the semi-annual groundwater monitoring program that we have, which is, which is done in June and December. So this should be ready for the June, or for the December reports.
Okay.
At least that's the plan.
Mr. Frazier, you make a stab in it in here, but I want to ask you a little more We've always, at least in my time on the commission, always been pretty strict about taking the lowest bid. And I certainly don't like to be in a position to argue against the local business, but I've had the unpleasant experiences of voting like the Bay Police Cars from Texas and fire truck from Hayes when we had a local bidder. Why should we not go with the low bidder in this case?
Well, the reason is because of the uncertainty of the drilling process, is that these bids are based on what the contractor believes will be the expenses that are going to incur in doing the drilling. Is it from what I understand from those companies, the CDM specifically, is that, that are going to look at this, is that the drilling process could involve more boreholes than what they had originally planned. If they hit a rock and they break equipment, the shop in which they'd have to come back and do repairs is closer. It means we can stay on schedule. It means that there's less time that we would be charged for doing the work. So there is some advantages in being able to get them in and to get the work done and to be close to their, their source of supplies and maintenance if they have problems with the drilling equipment. So based on those reasons and discussions with CDM, is that we felt is that it's very possible that this actually could be the low bid when it all sorts out.
Let me ask City Manager, do you think we're starting a precedent here that's going to give us problems down the road?
I don't think so. We talked about this and basically, I asked Mike the same question and the thought being is there's an anticipation you'll get into that 10% to 15% contingency. And his thought is, is that with the local company, when you get into that contingency, you get into those unit rates and other things, but there are costs associated and you would expect those costs to be lower. So if, in fact, the work does require us to get into the contingency, there's a thought that you save that difference probably pretty quickly based on that. My thought is, is if that's the reasoning versus just simply a local business because they're local, then that makes some sense because we're looking at what we believe will be the total cost of this when we're finished. And certainly, there's some presumptions into that. There's a presumption you'll need to get into that contingency a little, but there's probably a pretty good chance that'll happen with this type of work. And so I, I think that you're, I don't think you're setting a precedent if you base your decision on what you think could be the total cost.
Okay. Any additional questions, staff? Public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring back commission for action.
Mayor, I would move that we, for approval of authorization to award the bid for the landfill groundwater monitoring well installation to GeoCore for an amount up to $19,214.20.
Second.
Motion is to award a contract for groundwater monitoring well installation to GeoCore in an amount of $19,214.20. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.3, approve an agreement for the water treatment plant studies project number 07-2666.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Wilson &amp; Company has been involved in the design of the major water treatment plant improvements that have occurred over the past 50-plus years, and they've maintained record drawings and design criteria utilized for those projects. That information will be very valuable in completing the proposed studies that we're going to talk about today. Three independent studies are proposed to determine the most cost-effective methods to improve the efficiency and operation of the water treatment plant and the water distribution system. The first study is the High Service Pump Station Pressure Control Study. This study will examine alternatives for alleviating pressure surges in the water distribution system, which causes water main breaks. The high-service pumps pump directly into our water distribution system and currently those pumps are controlled manually by our water treatment plant operators. The plan with this study is to make that a mechanical operation. And two of the options that will be looked at would be VFDs or pump control valves. And these two systems would control how quickly the water transfers into the distribution system and would control the pressures. With the water main breaks, they typically happen at inappropriate or unfavorable times. They cause water loss and great inconveniences to our customers. So it's something that we want to take a look at and try to improve our customer service there. The second is chemical storage system study. That pertains to the alum, lime, soda ash, and carbon dioxide that's used for our softening process at the water treatment plant. This study will examine alternatives for either replacing or repairing the 25-year-old equipment that's currently being used. The third is a taste and odor control study. This study will examine alternatives to address taste and odor control, odor concerns resulting from maximizing the use of our surface water. And we do that to reduce the amount of groundwater and try to help bring our groundwater levels back into place. As the flows in the Smoky Hill River change, it has a tendency to change the quality of the water and that tends to create the toast, taste and odor problems that we deal with. The agreement before you today is written in a costplex plus fixed fee format with an amount not to exceed of $46,475. The funding for this agreement was allocated in the 2007 water and wastewater enhancement category of the capital improvement program. A total amount of $47,000 was allocated. Staff recommends that the city commission approve the agreement with Wilson &amp; Company Incorporated, Engineers and Architects of Salina, Kansas, in the amount not to exceed At this time, I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Ms. Tasker? Seeing none, thank you.
Just a general comment, Ms. Tasker. My confidence level in Wilson &amp; Company has been somewhat shaken in the last few years. When I think back to the fiasco we went through on the restrooms and the concession stand at the soccer complex, and then when I think back on their recommendations on the ponds on North Ohio Street. So I would strongly encourage you to work very hard with your baseball bat to make sure they get this right and that their recommendations are good and sound.
I believe we can accomplish that. The staff that would work on this project, I'm very familiar with and had worked with them on some of these very same projects. And I think as a team, we can accomplish what you're after there.
Very good, thank you.
I'll use a big ball bat if maybe.
Very good, thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring back the commission. entertain a motion? Wait a minute, nobody wants to make a motion? Well, we need a motion, I guess. I guess I'll move that we, how are we supposed to say this? Approve the agreement with Wilson &amp; Company, Inc., Architects and Engineers and Architects of Salina in the amount not to exceed $46,475 for the water treatment plant studies project number 07-2666. A devilish number.
I'll second it.
Motion is to approve the water treatment plant study with Wilson &amp; Company in the amount not to exceed $46,475. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.4, authorization to submit a wastewater treatment facility study to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The current Kansas water pollution control permit for the wastewater treatment facility contains a schedule of compliance that requires a wastewater treatment facility study be completed by September 1st, 2007, and submitted to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment by November 1st, 2007. As discussed at the study session held two weeks ago, this feasibility study defines the most cost-effective improvements to comply with the KDHE Surface Water Nutrient Reduction Plan by the year 2020. The feasibility study defines the treatment processes necessary to meet the goal of total phosphorus of 1.5 milligrams per liter and total nitrogen of 8 milligrams per liter. The improvements include converting the anaerobic digestion system to aerobic treatment, modifying the existing treatment facility by adding and deleting processes to accomplish biological nutrient removal. The existing primary intermediate clarifiers and trickling filters would be removed, which will provide us free space for new treatment processes. The proposed schedule of the biological nutrient removal upgrade or processes is to be complete by 2017. The estimated capital cost is $11.57 million with an annual operation and maintenance cost of $1.6 million. In addition to that, improvements were proposed to the existing anaerobic digester complex in 2008 to ensure reliable operation of the wastewater treatment plant through 2015. Those improvements included digester feed system piping instrumentation and gas safety equipment. The digester complex consists of four primary digestors and currently, three of them are in operation. At the study session, it was noted that the digester lid on number two digester would be repaired. Currently, at this time, we don't propose to do that because capacity is there in the three existing units that are still in service. The estimated cost is $500,000 and will be funded utilizing the EPA reserve funds. To meet KDHE Surface Water Nutrient Removal Reduction Plan by the year 2020, we're proposing the following schedule. In 2008, we'd complete the anaerobic digester complex improvements. In 2013, complete preliminary design for the biological nutrient removal processes. 2014, complete the design for the facility. Begin construction in 2015 with completion in the year 2017. And at 2017, we'd also meet our permit requirements. I want to note that KDHE would have the authority to move this schedule forward if they duly felt it was necessary based on whatever conditions might occur between now and then. But currently, this is what we recommend as the schedule. There's no physical impact at this time. Costs will be allocated in future budgets as we move through the budget process. Staff recommends that the city commission authorize staff to submit the wastewater treatment facility study to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, which would be by the 1st of November. At this time, I would answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. That study session was pretty thorough a couple weeks ago. Any public comment? Commission action?
I'd move for the authorization of staff to submit the wastewater treatment facility study to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
Second.
Motion is to authorize staff to submit the wastewater treatment facility study to KDHE, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.5, Resolution Number 07-6437, authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to the purchaser of a galvanizing facility financed by the city of Salina, industrial revenue bonds.
Mr. Binkston?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The short version is that you have the choice of either approving this resolution or being in contempt of the federal bankruptcy court.
Okay.
So it is my recommendation that you adopt it.
Dead.
The slightly, the rest of the details, I'll try to keep as brief as possible, but this does arise out of the 1999 issuance of industrial revenue bonds for the A-plus galvanizing project in the amount of $9 million. As is customary in industrial revenue bond projects, the bonds are issued and those bonds are paid from rents received from the facility. Title is actually transferred to the real estate and the facility. And then a lease is entered into between the city and the developer so that those lease payments over the term of the bonds pay the principal and interest on the bonds. Also, as is the case in these industrial revenue bond issues, with all of the details involved in that, it is customary these days for the, for cities all over the country to then delegate their rights and responsibilities to a bond trustee. In this particular case, the Bank of New York Trust Company is the bond trustee and they are represented by Terry Cups of the Fulton Seifkin Law Firm out of Wichita, that who, that is who has been in the lead role in terms of this project and has certainly kept us apprised as those developments occurred. In February of 2004, A-plus Galvanizing, Inc. did file a petition for bankruptcy under Chapter 11. Of late, the unsecured creditors committee, which is entirely made up of bondholders, and the bond trustee, along with A-plus Galvanizing, Inc. and Mr. Paul May as the guarantor of the obligations under the bonds, were able to reach an agreement as to the handling of, or the settlement of the matter, which led to a sale of the facility. And in that case, or in that scenario, the creditors committee had worked with and identified a proposed purchaser that then puts an initial bid in place in the bankruptcy court. As it turned out here, there was actually an additional bid that came in the picture as recently as just toward the end of last week. As it turns out, that latter bid was actually the prevailing bid and a Valmont, Inc., a national galvanizing company, ultimately submitted what was the final and successful bid in the amount of $6.5 million. The bankruptcy court has entered its order approving that sale. They anticipate closing just a little bit later this month. They'd like to move as quickly as possible on that, and that's what prompts this coming before you, just directly on the heels of that successful bid. Might mention also, on the fiscal note aspect, industrial revenue bonds are what are commonly referred to as a conduit financing. And as I mentioned earlier, they're backed by those rent proceeds. They are not in any way supported or backed by the full faith and credit of the city. So there is not a direct fiscal impact on the city of Salina. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Binkston? Any chance the new owner's going to open a salvage yard?
I'm not, I'm unaware of those, of that potential, but...
Hopefully, that's the last question. Okay. Any public comment? Commission action?
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 07-6437.
Second. Motion is to adopt Resolution 07-6437, authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to the purchase of a galvanizing facility financed by the city of Salina, industrial revenue bonds. Revenue Bonds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero. We do have a request for executive session?
Mayor, I move that the City Commission recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the eternity client privilege for the reason the public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege, and reconvene in this room at 5:53 PM.
I'll second.
Motion is to go into executive session for 20 minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five to zero. Is there any action anticipated afterwards?
No, Mayor.
No. Okay. Executive session.